Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and reconvene the special meeting of Folsom City Council. Any final action to report out a closed session, Mr. City Attorney?
No final action.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and adjourn the special meeting of the Folsom City Council and convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, March 28, 2017. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Howell?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Here.
Gaylord?
Here.
Morin?
Here.
And Miklos is absent.
All right, thank you. And would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, any agenda updates?
Mr. Mayor, you do have additional comments received on Item 9A. Those comments have been provided to the council and they have been made available to the public at the back table.
Okay, thank you. And next item here?
Your next item is Schedule Presentation 5A. This is a proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming April 9 through 15 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Folsom.
All right, thank you. And so, can I have our police chiefs, Cindy Renaud and Elva Valsek and Jenny Perani? Am I butchering those appropriately?[96.04][96.04](laughter) Thank you. I'm sure those will get corrected. All right, so every year, for those of you who view council meetings on a regular basis, we do this every year, recognizing our dispatch folks here in Folsom. And as most of you probably know, we are lucky and proud to have our very own 9/11 dispatch center here in the City of Folsom. And as we also all know, that provides us rapid emergency response. And as I read through the proclamation here, these statistics are always amazing to me. And then after I get through with this, I'll hand it off to our police chief and she can recognize, I think, some special award recipients here. So, thank you for being here. And without further ado, I will read the large print version of the resolution here. So this is a proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Folsom proclaiming April 9 through the 15th, 2017, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Folsom. Whereas the communications dispatchers of the City of Folsom are responsible for answering incoming calls for emergency services and dispatching assistance to help save the lives and property of our citizens. Whereas Folsom's communications dispatchers are a vital link to our police officers monitoring radio activity, providing information, and ensuring their safety. Whereas the safety of our emergency responders is dependent on the quality and accuracy of information attained from citizens who call the City of Folsom Public Safety Answering Point. Whereas in 2016, Folsom's communications dispatchers handled more than 103,000 telephone calls and dispatched more than 45,500 events. Whereas in 2016, Folsom's communications dispatcher answered 97.6 percent of all of those calls within 10 seconds or less. Whereas Folsom's communications dispatchers contribute substantially to the apprehensions of criminals in the City of Folsom. Whereas Folsom's communication dispatchers exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. So now therefore, I, Andy Morin, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the city, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9 through the 15th, 2017, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Folsom, and extend our gratitude to Folsom's communications dispatchers for their dedicated service to our community, their diligence, and commitment to keeping our city and the citizens of this city safe. Proclaim this 28th day of March, 2017. Would everybody please give these folks the recognition and appreciation they deserve?[277.83][277.83](applause)
Thank you, Mayor Morin, and thank you, City Councilmembers, for again recognizing our dispatchers during National Telecommunications Week. Even though we're here wearing police uniforms, you heard that they are the primary public safety answering point for the city, which means that any emergency comes to them first. Your loved one who's having a heart attack, a child who needs immediate medical care, that all comes into these folks first. And their call time of answering that amount of calls in 10 seconds or less is a stunning benchmark, and I have to tell you, you will not find that in most cities. Today, we have Sherry Wrinkle, who is our Technical Services Manager. She is the supervisor over records, dispatch, and our CAPS volunteers, here to support her dispatchers. And what we do for this is we choose our two dispatchers who are receiving awards at the annual regional banquet this year. So Elva, you're our dispatcher of the year, correct? And Jenny, you are our customer service of the year, correct? So congratulations to both of you for your awards. Thank you for the job that you do. You make our city safer every day.[349.72][349.72](applause)
All right, thank you. And I always do wonder, so when you're at home, who answers the phone when you're at home? Do you just ignore it?[379.87][379.87](laughter) Or do you get on it right away within 10 seconds?[382.62][382.62](laughter)
(inaudible)[384.62][384.62](laughter)
(laughter) Thanks again for coming out, and congratulations.[388.87][388.87](laughter) Okay, so with that, next item, please?
Mr. Mayor, your next item is Business from the Floor. You have one request to speak from John Combs.
All right. Good evening, John.
Good evening, Andy. Is this the best place to speak from, right here?
It is, perfect. You're amplified and you're on the record there. So thanks for coming out, John.
Good man. My pleasure. Sorry for the casual attire. I'm the assistant coach for the AA Cubs, and we're playing a game against the Nationals down in the rodeo tonight.
Are you a Cubs fan, too? You had a good year, if you are?
Yeah, a great year.
Very good.
Great year. And the game is five to five when I left.
As a Red Sox fan, congratulations.
Yeah.[432.31][432.31](laughter) Thank you, Terry. All right. My name is John Combs, and thank you very much for letting us speak this evening. I'm representing the cities of Folsom who are opposed to building a sewer road in the Hinkle Creek nature area. Hinkle Creek nature area is a 40-acre, undisturbed natural area with a creek that drains in the American River. It is located near the corner of Oak Avenue Parkway and American River Canyon Drive. In conversations with our city manager, Everett Palmer, he indicated that this project would be presented to the city council for policy approval in the next 30 to 60 days. This road is being constructed to allow vector trucks to drive up to manholes and vacuum out waste. After two years of studying this issue and engaging a wide variety of experts in sewer management, we are convinced there are alternatives that are just as effective in protecting the overflows in the Hinkle Creek while eliminating the need to build a road through one of Folsom's most beautiful natural areas. Our team has two requests. The first request is to meet with each of the council members. We'd like to take less than an hour with each of you to review our alternative proposals and enable you to make an informed policy decision on this matter. Second request is for a community meeting. In 2015, the city held two community meetings when this issue first came to a head, and we'd like to request the staff to inform the Folsom citizens of their recommendations, and we would encourage each of the council members to attend. We believe the overall objectives of this project has been off-target from the beginning. On page one of the analysis recommendations prepared by the city contracted engineering firm, the problem statement for each section of sewer line said, I quote, "No vector truck access to the manhole." We do not believe vector truck access is the problem, as we worked successfully with the city and a qualified contractor to camera inspect and flush the entire sewer line last August without needing to have a vector truck set a wheel into the nature area. We believe the objective of this project should be to develop a plan to ensure that the sewer line in Hinkle Creek is properly maintained and serviced, including early warning system for potential overflows and an effective process to deal with blockages. Our alternative can be accomplished in a manner the state regulatory agency would consider exemplary, at a cost of below the current projected cost, that minimizes the loss of trees and does not scar the park with a mile-long permanent road. Our recommendation has four elements. Number one, complete the necessary maintenance work on the sewer line with a keen eye to minimizing damage and destruction of the trees. After construction, return the area to as natural condition as possible. Number two, contract with a qualified contractor to clean and camera inspect the lines annually. The current standard is once every five years. We think we should do it every year. And use the videos obtained to provide early warning for maintenance issues within the line. Number three is to install strategically located wireless flow monitors to provide early warning for potential blockages. And finally, if there is an upline blockage that needs to be cleared, using industry-standard collection baskets versus a vector truck to remove the waste.
Okay, John, we've passed three minutes. Is that it?
I've got one page, almost done, Andy.
All right, I'll give you that time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. The harvest report shows that 175 trees will be impacted in this project, with 77 trees, almost all oak, being removed or critically impacted. For those in the audience who might think that doesn't apply to me, since I'm not sure where Hinkle Creek really is, be clear, these standards are being applied throughout the entire city. If you have a manhole in your community that is not accessible by a very large truck, there is a road in your future. On a side note, we noticed there's an agenda item for this evening, Consent Calendar to ApproVE Purchase of One Combine Single-Engine 10-Yard Vacuum Sewer Cleaning Vehicle. I would encourage you to postpone this decision until we have an opportunity to meet with you. In conclusion, we're looking forward to meeting all of the council members in a positive, constructive manner. We understand this project is moving from staff recommendation to a city council policy decision. We're confident that once you understand the details of our proposal, you will be convinced that our alternative is a superior solution and meets the objections we outlined above. For those wanting more information, please go to www/savehinklecreek.com and look under Current Updates. That's www/savehinklecreek.com. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, John. And thanks for taking time away from your game.[716.51][716.51](applause) And go Cubs.[719.01][719.01](applause)
Hey, John, would you come back up in this minute?
We can't ask too many questions here, Ernie.
No, no.[727.12][727.12](laughter) I can't talk to you. That's why I was just going to tell John, I got your request, but I haven't been talking too much in the last couple of weeks. But I will call you.
It's not my turn, Ernie.
I know.[737.19][737.19](laughter) It's driving me nuts, but I'm getting better. So I will call you.
Thank you. Appreciate the time. Thank you, Morin.
Okay. I guess that concludes Business from the Floor, then. All right, next item?
Your next item tonight is Consent Calendar. You do have two requests to speak on Items 7D.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and move...
And I want to pull E, and I'm going to recuse from I.
All right. Recuse.
I'd like to pull C.
Carrie, pulling C. So we have no consent calendar. We're going to talk about everything. That's okay.[775.32][775.32](laughter) So, okay, so is that it on requests to speak on items? Okay, very good. So I will move A, B, F, G, and H.
Second.
Okay, those items moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Morin.
Yes. And let's see, so Item 7C, was that you, Roger, that had a question on it?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll have the city clerk read that item, then.
So, Item 7C is Resolution 9893. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with environmental rental services for the purchase of one combo single-engine 10-yard vacuum sewer cleaning truck and appropriation of funds.
Okay, Roger?
I just wanted a little more detail on it, if it was indeed per John's request to pull it for Hinkle Creek specifically, or was it a greater need in the city?
No, and thank you for the question, Councilmember Gaylord. This particular vector truck is scheduled to be deployed in our storm drain system because you can't use the same vector equipment in your sewer that you use in the storm drain just for environmental purposes. So this is replacing a vector that is used in our storm drain system only. And this is a 10-yard truck, so we wouldn't propose to be driving such a large vehicle up into the Hinkle Creek open space, anyway.
Perfect. I'll move Item C.
Seconded.
Okay, so moved by Vice Mayor Howell, seconded by Councilmember Gaylord. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Morin.
Yes. All right, next item there on consent.
Your next item was requested to be pulled by two members of the public. This is Resolution Number 9895. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a consultant and professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for environmental and preliminary engineering design services for the Folsom Placerville Rail Trail Project funded by a regional active transportation program grant.
Okay, so first speaker on that item?
Okay, your first request to speak is from Jim Harville. Mr. Harville is followed by Bill Mueller.
Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, councilmembers. Jim Harville, President of Placerville and Sacramento Valley Railroad, your excursion railroad here in Folsom. Actually, put in to speak Business from the Floor, wanted to just cover a couple of items. One, we do support this trail extension. The connection between the Willow Creek area and the trail that's extending out to Broadstone, Highway 50, is integral to the joint ventures that we work with the trails community, and we're happy to see that trail put in alongside the rails. Also want to take the opportunity of welcoming our new council member and look forward to sharing with you more about our program that your fellow council members have supported so strongly over the years. I also wanted to take one last minute and compliment the city staff, developers, and consultants in the SOI project, the development starting south of Highway 50. They have been so helpful and so attentive to trying to mitigate the impacts of that project on our program. So I wanted to let you know personally that we appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for taking the time to come out, Jim. Okay, next speaker.
Your next speaker is Bill Mueller.
Good evening, Bill. Good to see you.
Good evening. Good to see you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Bill Mueller. I'm the CEO of Valley Vision. Valley Vision is a regional leadership organization based in Sacramento with offices in Sacramento and Stockton. I'm here to talk about the Folsom Placerville Rail to Trails program that my organization and many, many others are excited to see built out. Tonight, we hope that you're approving an additional mile of that trail, which we feel is incredibly important to the overall trail network. I'm here to compliment you and our leaders throughout the Sacramento area. Both business and private sectors see that Folsom's leadership in building out a connected trail network, a bike and pedestrian, is something that you're renowned for, and in the larger context, we'd like to see more of, from other cities and other counties, and really create a connected system that not only links the American River Bike Trail, but also the City of Folsom, Rancho Cordova, Placerville, Sacramento, and Davis. If we were to do that, we would have one of the longest and biggest connected trail systems, not just in the United States, but in the world, at well over 200 miles. This would be something that would have tremendous, not only health impacts, but also very, very positive economic and tourism benefits, and Folsom is leading the way. And I'm just here to say thank you very much for your leadership. You're a standout in the region when it comes to cities and that sort of development, and we would surely like to see more of that, and we're very hopeful to be working with you over the next couple of years.
Great. Thanks, Bill.
I'm going to move the item, but before I do that, I just want to thank Jim and Bill for coming out. I had a long conversation with Walt Seifert earlier today, and I think I provided Walt far more information than he was expecting to receive. If you guys are working toward 200 miles, there's already 50 in Folsom.
Indeed, there is.
So I think that's very, very important, and I don't see Bob Holder in the audience, but...
I do.
Oh, okay, so there he is. I think it's Bob's line that, you know, "Don't talk yourself out of a consent item."[1140.44][1140.44](laughter) So thank you guys for being here, but I think everybody's been very, very supportive of this, and as the, I don't know, very, very long time, maybe too long time, Chair of that rail JPA, we are, Folsom is continuing to build trails in that rail alignment, and we hope that we are serving as an example.
You certainly are.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up, Bill.
Thank you.
So that a motion, Vice Mayor?
I already moved it.
Okay, seconded. Moved, seconded by Councilmember Gaylord. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Howell?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Morin.
Yes, and Item 7E pulled by Vice Mayor Howell.
Item 7E is Resolution Number 9896. This is a resolution of the City of Folsom renaming Scott Road in the Folsom Plan area to East Bidwell Street, and appropriation of funds for those new freeway signs.
I've spoken to the city manager about this, and I understand why we're doing it, because we have Scott Street and Scott Road, but Scott Road has been there like forever. And I think we're going to hear from some folks on the history side later on tonight. And I understand why safety personnel wants to do this. I guess there's some fear of confusion about addresses in the future, when at some point in time, there would be residences or businesses that had addresses that were on Scott Street as opposed to Scott Road. But my concern is that, you know, not that $50,000 is the end of the world, but I'd like to find some other alternative so that we don't have to spend $50,000 on Caltrans signs. And, you know, I've lived here for a really long time, and I still, it's Scott Road to me. And I know, and we have a lot of other locations in the City of Folsom where street names change when you cross another major roadway. So I guess I want more convincing that we need to spend 50 grand on Caltrans signs to change a road. I mean, is there something that we could do? Could we call it South Scott or S. Scott on the freeway signs at less cost? I know I'm being picky, but I'm the transportation check, so...
Except for it would have to be North Scott, because Scott Road does continue on past White Rock.
Well, North Scott works for me.
Which is an oddity, because as you know, and I know you know this.
I know, Great Scott works for me.
The Scott Roads don't even align at White Rock Road, so...
Yeah, I... Go ahead.
Sorry.
Go ahead. I was just going to add, and I appreciate those concerns. We have done this in the past, and I think we renamed Scholar Way from Clarksville that section because we ended up with two Clarksville-Broadstone or something like that. And we're bad at naming streets here. I mean, I remember, I think it was Jeff Starse, he wanted Brain Lane on that Scholar Way. But I understand the need to do this, and if we decide later to do this, it'll just get more expensive, because once there are addresses on there, then there's additional hoops to jump through to, you know, pay for that disruption of those addresses. So I certainly understand the reluctance on the part of Vice Mayor Howell, but it just seems at this point to be the, you know, kind of the, not the perfect decision, but the best decision going forward.
I don't know, I still like North Scott. Thank you.
So I'll move the item?
I'll second it.
Okay, so moved and seconded. Please call the roll on Item 7E.
Councilmember Howell?
No.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
No.
And Morin?
Yes.
I was not trying to get this to a tie, but...[1355.02][1355.02](laughter)
Okay, so that motion fails, for lack of a majority there. So we'll just push that off and work on additional details there, so... All right, it's nice to have a tie vote like that occasionally.
On a consent item.
On a consent item, no less. Okay, so last item on consent was a requested recusal by Vice Mayor Howell, so I will go ahead and move Item 7I.
And I'll just state my recusal is Quincy Engineering is a client of mine, so...
Okay. And so a second?
A second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Gaylord. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
And Morin.
Yes. All right, that finally gets us through consent there. So with that, next item, please.
Your next item tonight is Old Business, Item 8A. This is ordinance 1261, an ordinance adding Sections 102280 and 102470 to the Muni Code pertaining to parking and storage of vehicles, recreational vehicles, and utility trailers. This is before you tonight for introduction and first reading.
Thank you. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. This matter was originally brought to you last September to amend the city's parking ordinance in order to regulate the parking of recreational vehicles and utility trailers on city streets. Based on council comments and feedback, staff is bringing this back to you for consideration in advance of the upcoming summer season. But allow me to start off by saying that there's no change to the original proposal limiting the parking of RVs and utility trailers on city streets for up to 72 hours at any given time. And as a convenience to the city residents, the 72-hour timeframe can be extended upon request for up to four times in a year. And edits that were made to the original proposal are showing red line attached to your staff report, and they center primarily on the following four major areas. One, RVs and utility trailers must be moved at least one mile away from the original location at the conclusion of the 72-hour timeframe, and this is an increase from the original proposal of half a mile based on council feedback. And two, a provision is inserted to authorize the removal and towing of violating RVs and trailers after the third violation within a one-year period, with notice and a procedure prescribed in the Folsom Municipal Code. So there's a process to go through before the actual towing and removal will take place to give notice to the property owners in advance. Three, based on feedback pertaining to neighborhood complaints, the proposed ordinance would prohibit the parking of any vehicle on the front yard, side yard, lawn, landscape areas visible from the public right-of-way or grass unless they are parked on a permanent driveway or parking space with a paved surface. So they can still do that, but they got to have a paved surface approved by the city. And lastly, there must be at least 40 percent of lawn, grass, order, landscaping, and permeable surfaces remaining in the front yard setback area of the property. This is to avoid situations where you have a private residence with the entire front yard area paved over with concrete for parking, as you might see from time to time in some neighborhoods in San Francisco, for example. So hopefully, we won't see that here in Folsom. With that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions for...
I got a comment.
Go ahead, Ernie.
I'm going to vote for it, because I think it's the best you can do. But it irritates me when you're going to move a mile from where the owner owns the vehicle to somewhere where they don't own the vehicle, okay? To me, that's just putting somebody else's neighbor to be concerned, and whether or not that defers them from doing it. I know if you buy an RV, a big one, most of the people I know, they have storage and they take it when they're going to move and so forth. Sometimes visitors will come, you know, friends or parents or something, and we have provisions for that. But that's really awful. But I don't know what we can do any better. And as far as the, I always thought we had an ordinance to stop them from parking on the grass. If you take a trip down from, down Montrose, around the Catholic Church, it's a horrible deal. And it is up to two or three on those apartments, I'm sure they're rented, they're right smack up to the window. I mean, it is not on the grass. You know, you can jump out of the car and hit your window. With this ordinance, when we pass it, where we're going to, I believe, we need enforcement. I mean, that's got to stop. And if the renters don't want to be affected, then we have to talk to the owners of the apartments, who are absentee owners, I'm sure, because that's a horrible deal. Everything else is pretty good, but when you get in that one, two blocks, it is tremendously bad.
Understood. And we work closely with court enforcement, and we had many meetings with Pete and Jennifer, his assistant as well, on parking enforcement. This would give them a good tool to move forward without having to tell people, "You just got to move," without having the authority to rely on.
I do have a request to speak on this. Any other questions?
I'll wait till the public...
Okay, very good.
Okay, your one request to speak is from Casey Kempinare.
For, you want the general plan item? Okay, very good. Okay, so...
Okay, so come on back up, Steve. All right, so...
Yes, ma'am.
I was one of the council members who had a lot of comment to make about this, and we talked about it before, as it relates to RVs and recreational vehicles, that sort of thing. On my cul-de-sac, there are eight houses. There are two houses for which I know complaints have been filed. Of the eight, one of the houses, there's no issue about the landscaping and all that stuff. That house happens to be on a corner. It's a question of moving the recreational vehicles, and they get moved. I have never checked to see how far away they get moved, but I don't have an issue, and that's not been a house I've ever complained about or had people give me complaints about. There are two other houses on my cul-de-sac. One of the houses, when the house was flipped a few years ago, and the new owners, between One of the houses, when the house was flipped a few years ago and the new owners, between the flip and the new owners, at the top of a cul-de-sac, there's not a lot of front yard, including my house, because I'm one of the two at the top of the cul-de-sac. One of the houses that never parks an RV or a boat or anything else like that in their driveway or on the street, they, I believe, have maybe, if there's any paving, if there's any landscape area in front of their house, it's certainly not 40%. That's not a problem. One of the other neighbors that, actually, one of the RVs returned just a couple of days ago, but now it's gone today. But in that particular location, another section of driveway has been added that goes directly up to one of the front windows of the house. The rest of the landscaping has been removed. There's a couple of redwood trees that were planted. That's all that's there. This particular house has a two-car garage. You can probably park at least four, if not six, cars in front of the garage. There's now parking for a boat, a motorhome, and several other vehicles that now go all the way almost up to the front door. So, there's a little strip of bark with a couple of trees in it. So, I don't know how you include the RV parking with they have illegally transformed what used to be a front yard into a parking lot.
That's a very good question.
And I don't wanna be Pete Picardo to have to be the guy to deal with this.
And that's exactly, Vice Mayor Howell, that's exactly why this additional provision was added to address that issue.
Well, you should've come back at the last council meeting because that was before the paving was installed.
Ah, so hopefully, we'll prevent more situations like this from occurring.
Well, I, I don't know, because this one particular residence has been a problem for 10 years at least. So, anyway, you know where I live, take a ride up the street, you'll see what I'm talking about.
And we'll check with planning records as well and building department records to see if there's any permit requirement.
Probably not.
We'll check. Yes, ma'am.
It'd save me money if I paved over the whole front of my house and didn't have to pay the gardener, but I'm not gonna do that because it's not the right thing to do.
Correct. So, any other questions for Steve? Okay, and, you know, I think folks can tell, there's a balance here and hopefully, we're striking the right balance, but this is a lot of times an iterative process. So, we'll see if there's an unintended consequence here and we can address that, the future update to the ordinance. But Steve, thanks for all your work on this. I know it's taken a couple of swings, but, but I think we've struck some balance there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, with that, no request to speak on the item. Go ahead and entertain a motion for Item 8A.
I'll move it if it comes back within the next six months because I think there's gonna be more problems that come up as a result of this.
If it comes back, I don't think, I think you just need to move the item.
I might be the one to bring it back.
Okay, so just move the item.
I did.
With, with no stipulations, okay. Moved by Vice Mayor Howell with complexities and seconded by Councilmember Gaylord, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Howell?
With complexities, yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Just a yes.
And Morin?
Yes. Okay, thanks again, Steve. All right, with that, next item, please.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, your last business item tonight is New Business 9A. This is the preliminary draft general plan workshop.
Excellent, good evening. How you doing, David?
Real good, Mayor. Mayor and City Council, I'll have just a very few remarks to kind of tee this up and then we'll have Chelsea Payne, who we're all getting to know very well on our general plan, to come up and run through the presentation and give you some more information that you can take a look at and give us maybe a little direction as to where we go from here. Since you saw this draft on January 10th, Chelsea has been to our Park and Recreation Commission, to our Historic District Commission, and also to the Planning Commission to make the presentation. And as you would guess, there were comments that came from those meetings, not only from the commissions, but also from people who attended those meetings. You have copies of all of those comments, including those that were added this evening. And what we're going to do this evening is to, to go back over and refamiliarize you with the issues because some of these comments deal directly with the content of the policies. We also would like to let you know, because we think it's tremendously important, that since the January 10th City Council meeting, we have done considerable outreach. In February, March, Citywide printed newsletter had a front-page article that reached 28,000 residents and businesses. We've had five articles in the weekly e-newsletter. Each of them reaches 8,000 subscribers. We also had five Facebook, Twitter posts resulting in a total reach to over 7,000 social media users, and they, of course, reacted to the, to the document in terms of likes and shares. We've also put out email blasts about the public meetings through the Folsom 2035 website, so we're really kind of trying to saturate folks. We've also had some requests to make presentations to the Merchants Association and Historic District and a few others. I've made a couple of presentations to our local Realtor and service groups on this issue as well. One question that I thought I would kind of preempt here and bring up because it's been asked a couple of times and I think it's good to clarify it, and that is, what is meant by the planning area portion of the general plan map, which extends beyond the city limits? Well, if we look at this government code with relation to the general plan, there is a section that says, "For purposes of determining the adequacy of your general plan, you need to relate to any land outside of the boundaries of the plant, planning agency's jurisdictional boundaries that might bear relation to its planning." Now, there are two areas that are outside the city limits that are included. The first is the Glenboro Eastern area, which we know has been approved for development for about 5,000 residential units and about 5 million feet of commercial. We certainly do think that that development will bear upon our city in various ways, whether it's traffic or services or that sort of thing. So, it's very important that we, we do include that and we jointly plan with them. The second area is the area south of White Rock Road that was included in the 2004 SECOG blueprint as a future urbanized area, and it includes a large rock quarry mining operation that will affect Folsom, and we have, we've had lengthy discussions about truck traffic and those kinds of things. There is no development or any proposal in the general plan for either of these areas other than our corporation yard. So, what we're doing is we're planning for areas that will affect our future, and however that planning turns out to be in the future, we're just saying, these areas are important to us because whatever happens there is going to affect us. No land uses are stipulated. Certainly, the Glenboro Eastern's already approved, it has a development agreement, it has final maps and all that sort of thing. But I think it's good to clear that up because a lot of people ask the question, say, well, what do you intend to do with those areas? Well, we don't intend to do anything with the area that's already approved for development, that's a done deal. And we really have no plans for south of White Rock Road, but we know it's important to our boundaries. And if the message is sent by SECOG that this could be urbanized, well, then we don't necessarily want people moving in and doing that without us having a good say in it. So, that's, that's the reason those exist. So, the focus of tonight's presentation is to review the major content of the draft 2035 plan and seek council's consensus as to any changes or additions to the plan that you might want included from the commission and public review and the comments you've received. And if you do, we would then go ahead and make those changes before we begin the environmental impact report. We wanna make sure the total project description is there and we cover everything. We will have later hearings once the EIR is done, and there will be mitigation measures and probably recommendations for some policy changes that deal with the environmental impact of the document. So, it is customary for the environmental review to add mitigation and some edits to the document in order to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act. So, you have an opportunity when these hearings come up to make any changes that you think are important, and you'll have the benefit of the environmental analysis to include in your decision-making. But should you decide that any of the, the major recommendations that you'll hear probably from the public and, and have in writing if you really like us to tackle those and take them on, then we'd like that direction so that we can clean this document up and bring it back to you. So, without further ado, we have Chelsea with the presentation and be happy to answer any questions on the introduction, my dear.
You know, David, and maybe Chelsea will cover this, and I think it's important for everybody watching this and wanting to really participate in the most valuable way possible is, is kind of a timeframe issue. So, you talked about.
Right.
So, so we're gonna listen, we've already gotten a lot of comments on this, we're gonna hear more this evening. And then, so, so when would you expect, you know, kind of finalize council input through all those comments then?
Well, we, we have the comments with you now. If there's anything that really stands out that you feel strongly about, we'll go ahead and deal with that now. Really, the, usually in these processes, city councils want the environmental review. They wanna know what the impacts are. They wanna know about big issues like traffic, noise, that sort of thing. And that, and about, I would say, probably five to six months, we will have a draft EIR ready to circulate. Not only do you have the EIR and its comments, but we are required to circulate that to state agencies and to our neighbors in the area. So, we'll have comments back from, whether it's the school district or surrounding jurisdictions or the counties that surround us or Sacramento County, we'll have all of that back with the EIR because they'll have it. And that's when you really get the major public comment. So, in about five to six months, we will bring back to you the draft EIR. That will be circulated and we will bring all the comments to you, so you'll be able to take a final vote.
Okay.
On the document. And this document is so important for the community that if there are changes that you want, we will take any time we need to, to make it right before you adopt it.
Andy, I got a question.
Yes, Ernie?
Well, Dave, I'm only concerned because you mentioned that we're gonna hear a lot of input, which I'm sure we are. There's a lot of input in this, okay? This is not an easy reading document, okay? It's not for the average citizen to sit down and read a document. It's technical, okay? And there's a lot of questions in there. I only hope that you don't expect, don't expect me to make a decision tonight on what I hear, okay? I'm gonna have to have some time to think about it. And in response to some of the things I've already looked at in this and have an opinion on the direction this plan is going, okay? I'm not gonna make any real guidance to you tonight to say, hey, that's, that's a very hot thing, let's do it. I mean, it takes more thought. I was here in the 1988 general plan. I didn't participate in other thing, other than the park part of it. We wrote the park part of it, and that's held up for a lot, a lot of years pretty well, okay? That was all done by layman. There was no real professionals, just a bunch of guys that sat down in, in the guy's apartment and did it, okay? So, I, I'm just saying, from my point of view, I've got a lot of questions to ask and I wanna hear the input, and I think some of these attachments of people that, that have sent in, you know, comments, I think they're outstanding, many of them. I don't agree with every single thing on every page, but I think the level of thought that went in is excellent. So, I would hope that you're not expecting to get some final guidance tonight or your, the consultants.
Yeah, I, I guess I should.
I don't know if you are, maybe I misread that.
Councilmember, I should repeat myself. You do not vote to adopt this and you can't by law until you have the environmental document. I'm just saying that if you've received some input over, we've, we've just, we've barraged the community with this, so we are getting a lot of input. If there's anything that really stands out that's just clearly in the front of your mind, you know, this has gotta be in this document, that's what I'm looking for. You're gonna have plenty of time over the next six months to come back and say, there are certain things you'd like to have changed in the document. Whether or not that affects the environmental review, we'll have to react to that. But what we wanna do is to take the majority of what we have here and see if that is moving in the right direction so that we can start the environmental work. But you can't adopt it until the environmental work's done.
I understand, but we wanna have a consensus of the, all five members here in the council as to the direction we're going with this plan because this is the future, 2035, okay? And this is nothing to be done in any real time. And you've been working a long time, I mean, there's a lot of effort, I understand that. I'm just saying, take it easy. I'll cite an example. When the council considered 1988 the saving of all the creeks and the park commission made that request, it fell on deaf ears. They didn't know what the hell we were talking about. But when the plan came out, it was in it, and today, you can tell how good that idea was, okay? Because we preserved our creeks and there came the trails. So, I, I just say, you know, it, it's, it's a really important, you emphasize it.
Yes, it is.
And this is the future, and I have some concerns when we get, I wanna hear the input of other people before I tell you my input, but I just, I just wanted to be sure.
You bring up a good point, though, because about 70% of this is directly out of the 88 plan. We said when we started this that we've done so many things so well, let's not reinvent it, let's build on what we have. So, if there are, the, the majority of the changes that I've seen in it, in reading the 88 plan and this one, are things that are mandated and the greenhouse gas requirements and some of these other things that people have to do. But there still are issues that people have strong feelings about. So, we're, you know, we'll do whatever the council wants us to do, but part of our job is to not only do that, but keep these projects moving. I'm taking it real easy, I've taken 10 years to get this to you. So, I'm, I'm at your service as to what you wanna do.
I've been living in this town for 32 years, so 10 doesn't impress me, okay? And I expected, and I can't say I'm gonna live to 2035, who knows? But I, I know you're, I know you're working hard and your consultants are working hard, I don't doubt that, but this is a tough document to read and absorb.
I'm just gonna add on to what Ernie said, and I'm sorry that I disagree with you, but maybe it's because I'm a geek. I think it's a really easy document to read, I think it's well-written, but I just wanna remind everybody, this is not here tonight for approval. This is here tonight for a workshop and to get input from the public. So, no one's asking you to make a decision.
I don't.
If you have comments, then make them tonight. It doesn't mean that it's your last opportunity to say something.
Is, is the social media aspect ran via the city or through the consultant for this?
Beg your pardon?
The social media push for awareness, has it ran through the city's social media or is it through the consultant's social media?
We, we've run it, we've, we've used ours, you know, our, our PIO's done a lot of work with us, and I've offered informational pieces that she, you know, interpreted and put it in more layman's terms. Our consultant has also done that, so, and we, they have a sub that works with our, our crowdsourcing page so that it's user-friendly and people can get their comments in. So, it's kind of been from a number of sources, but all of the, the outlets that we have for our information at the city, we're using all of them.
Is there, I'd like to get a report on the engagement and the impression level as far as back returning so you can, you could have an impression of the 2035, Folsom 2035, but I'd like to see the engagement level of that, so if there's something analytics that we can get from that, that'd be awesome.
Sure, sure, we can provide that for you.
Thank you.
How many hits you've had and comments and likes and dislikes, that kind of thing?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
We can do that.
Okay, any other questions for David before we get Chelsea up here? Okay, thanks, David, and I guess as Chelsea's coming up, it is, it's a really incredibly iter, iterative process. So, you know, this is the first swing at receiving a lot of input, and as you clearly indicated, there'll be opportunities down the road, so. And, and I'll just add that I've been very impressed with a lot of what I've seen commentary. I mean, people really are taking this seriously and spending a lot of time looking at this stuff, so we as councilmembers sincerely appreciate that.
Agreed.
Thanks, David.
Chelsea? Good evening, Chelsea.
Good evening, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Chelsea Payne with Minter Harnish, and I'm happy to be here before you again tonight to present the draft general plan for a second time. As David mentioned, we're very far along here in, in the process. We've been at this for several years, and, and earlier this year in January, we released the preliminary draft of the general plan, and this is a workshop here tonight to present the comments that we've received over the past several months, and this is an iterative process, so we'll be at this, we'll, you'll see a couple additional drafts of this before we're here for the adoption hearing. I just wanna go over some of the, highlight some of the process for the general plan update. There was a lot of early input that went into the work that we did on the draft general plan. We had a, our first workshop back in April of 2013 where we talked to the community members about opportunities, challenges, and the vision for the future here in Folsom, and, and a lot of what we heard at that initial workshop found its way into the vision statement and the guiding principles, and it echoes the voice of the community. We also had several, a lot of interaction through the online Town Hall forum over the past several years. There were 22 different topics posted on the forum where we got feedback from the community, and we reviewed all of that feedback as we reviewed the general plan and developed new policies. We also published a worker survey that we sent out to a lot of the major employers here in Folsom, and we got 202 responses, and that was asking people that might not necessarily live here in Folsom but, that work here, what amenities they enjoy about Folsom, what they, and what they would like to see here in the future. So, looking not only at residents, but trying to capture the, the voice of employees here in Folsom. We produced a lot of different documents throughout the process. They're listed here, and all of these documents are available on the project website, which is folsom2035.com. There's, there's. There's a summary of the community workshop that I mentioned, the summary of some of the input we received through the online forum, and a copy of the background report, which is a detailed existing conditions report, and also the draft vision and guiding principles. David already mentioned a lot of the publicity that we did after we released the draft general plan in January, so I won't go through that in detail. But we've, we've done our best to reach out to a lot of people here, and I think a lot of people are very aware of this process and have engaged and provided comments. And it's, it's been really, the caliber of the input that we've gotten from the community is really impressive. And after, following the January 10th meeting here at the city council, we published the preliminary draft plan and then had meetings with the various commissions that David mentioned. And all of that input and all of the feedback we heard from the public is included in your packet. So I'm going to highlight some of the major themes of the preliminary draft general plan. The plan is divided into nine different-
I just want to note that, you know, there's, this is a comment I was going to make later. You just showed a wind farm. There is no intention of having a wind farm in Folsom. So please disregard that background.
That is not in the vision. That's correct. That is not in the vision and guiding principles. We'll just breeze over the wind farm. So there are nine chapters of the draft general plan.
Yes, you should breeze over the wind farm.
The general plan addresses the range of topics that are required per state law, and it also has a few optional topics, like economic development, parks and recreation. I'll just mention that the housing element, while it's an element of your general plan, it's not being updated as part of this general plan update because the city just adopted the housing element in 2013. Per state law, the housing element is on its own schedule. Once you adopt the rest of the general plan, the housing element will be integrated, and that's what makes up the whole general plan. So I'll go through some of the major themes of each of the elements. The land use element covers a wide variety of topics from, has a large focus on maintaining, enhancing the quality of life and sense of community here in Folsom. That's a major emphasis of the vision and guiding principles. It also focuses on supporting thriving urban centers, and these are real community gathering places throughout Folsom, from Historic Folsom, the planned community center south of 50. We've introduced a new mixed-use overlay that we've presented in our last presentation to council. Primarily along East Bidwell, we've introduced a mixed-use overlay that creates some flexibility for property owners in the future that might be interested in doing a more mixed-use project. So it doesn't affect the underlying land use designation or the zoning, but it creates some flexibility to do a new type of development. We've also introduced a mixed-use overlay around the transit stations within a quarter-mile of the transit stations for transit-oriented development overlay. The policies in the land use element focus on creating complete and livable neighborhoods that provide a variety of quality housing choices, and also maintaining the land use supply for jobs and retail to make sure that Folsom maintains a strong job base and a variety of goods and services. Their policy is guiding the urban design to make sure that new development adds to the high-quality built environment and creates memorable places in Folsom. The mobility element has a strong emphasis on complete streets. Complete streets are streets that serve all modes of travel. So thinking about streets as not just moving cars, but also serving cyclists and pedestrians and people of all ages and abilities. There's also a large emphasis on improving sidewalks and trails and bikeways. And one of the major policy changes in this draft general plan is to move from a Level of Service C to a Level of Service D. And we did talk about that at length during the January council meeting, and we can answer any more questions you have on that here. The, the mobility element also focuses on using emerging technologies to create efficiencies and coordinating with regional transit providers to improve light rail headways, extend service hours, and also preserve a right-of-way for a high bus transit corridor south of 50. There's also support in the mobility element for the Capital Southeast Connector, which is going to create a new regional connection through the area. The economic prosperity element, it focuses on maintaining Folsom's supportive business climate, enhancing social and cultural amenities that will attract the creative, skilled, and innovative workforce, coordinating with leaders in the Technology Center to attract new technology startup businesses, investing strategically in infrastructure such as fiber-optic to support economic development, and coordinating with local, regional, and state partners that support economic development within the region. And there's also a large emphasis on promoting tourism related to the history, culture, and recreational opportunities. The natural and cultural resource element focuses on protecting natural and scenic resources, improving air quality, preserving and protecting water quality, and restoring and maintaining historic buildings and sites. There's also emphasis on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. The general plan is intended to essentially serve as the city's climate action plan. And the general plan EIR is going to cover greenhouse gas emissions, which will provide streamlining benefits for future development proposals that are consistent with the general The public facilities and services element addresses the whole range of public facilities and services, from civic and educational facilities to water supply. There are a lot of policies about promoting water conservation, maintaining adequate wastewater, stormwater, and flood control systems, maintaining the high level of police and fire protection service that you have in Folsom, and reducing waste by supporting recycling and composting. The parks and recreation element, and this is an optional element, but certainly an important element here in Folsom, this element focuses on maintaining the robust system of parks that you have here in Folsom and developing new parks, providing recreational programs, involving the community in the planning for these new parks and recreational programs, and coordinating with state, county, school district, and other partner agencies. And then lastly, the safety and noise element focuses on emergency response, reducing risks from seismic flood and wildfire, managing and regulating hazardous materials, and then protecting residents from excessive noise exposure. So that's the whole range of topics that are addressed in the general plan. It is a very lengthy document, but we've done our best to make it an easy-to-use, easy-to-read document that we hope can be really effective here in the future. As David mentioned, and as you can see in your staff report, we received a lot of comments from the commissioners, members of the public that attended those commission meetings. We also received several public comment letters, emails, and comments on the online forum. And all of that is summarized in your packet. I'm going to highlight just a few of the major themes that were brought up throughout a lot of the meetings or through a lot of the comments. The first is the idea to adopt a river district overlay. And this would apply to the areas surrounding the American River. The comment was that by having this river district overlay, the city could focus on expanding access, opening up the river, and making the river more of an integral part of the city's fabric. So having more recreational opportunities, more amenities along the river. The second, the second comment that we heard, and this was emphasized particularly at the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, was a need to strengthen implementation programs related to Parks and Rec. There were a lot of comments that the body of policies were really strong, but there was a need for additional implementation, specifically a program to develop, or to look at opportunities to develop additional funding strategy and emphasizing indoor recreational There were, we received comment letters, and there were comments made at the meeting from the Heritage Preservation League about strengthening policies for historic preservation, and there are several comments in your, the staff report related to that. And then one last comment that I'll bring up is related to the East Bidwell mixed-use overlay, there were some comments about extending that to apply to the entire East Bidwell corridor all the way to the interchange. So as you see in your packet, there are a lot of comments that go beyond this, but these were some of the themes that were brought up again and again through the meetings. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the draft general plan or our presentation.
Great, thanks, Chelsea. So questions for Chelsea?
Well, I'll ask a couple, but I think I want to hear what people have to say before-
I do have a number of requests to speak. You want to just hold off, Ernie, until we-
That'd be fine.
Okay, that might be the best course here. So any question for Chelsea before we bring up-
I'd rather have the public first.
Okay. So let's go ahead and do that. Do have a number of requests to speak on this topic, so let's ring those up.
Okay, your first speaker will be Loretta Hedinger. Loretta will be followed by Casey Campener.
Good evening, Loretta.
Hello. I think I know all of you, but it's nice to see you. Heritage Preservation League was formed as a 501(c)(4) about a dozen or so years ago because there, we have about a dozen or so historic 501(c)(3)'s, and many of them find that they are quite nervous about entering into the political arena because of the regulations that preserve their tax-exempt status. That's why you don't have a big stack of cards from history people to speak tonight. And most of the comments of HPL, if not all, are supported by the history organizations. So I am not just speaking as Heritage Preservation League, but for the many history people in your community.
And thanks, thanks for forwarding those comments to us as well, so we can see those at a time.
Sure. Yes, it's always helpful to see. Easier for me to condense my speech here, too. And I'm trying to do that very hard, but it's, there are a lot of things to say. Our overarching and most serious concern is that this document is too silent on the role of history in Folsom's future. I don't mean to imply that history is ignored in it, but there are errors and omissions that need to be corrected. And as much guidance as you could give the staff tonight, you will have the opportunity to save some trees because our comments will keep coming back through the process. In doing the changes that we are hoping for, there are two big benefits for the city as a whole, not just the history community. Our history is what distinguishes us from any town USA. Every town in the US, I think, has a Walmart and a McDonald's, but they don't have a Sutter Street, or a Folsom Prison, or a powerhouse, or ground sluice mining trenches. The second one is a very current kind of topic, and that's the fact that our history is one of the factors that unify us with the entire community, not just the 98-block Theodore Judah map area. That's the family room for Folsom. And when people see their roots, then they feel rooted. And the area south of Highway 50, it always comes up that people are worried that that's going to be two separate cities, that they aren't going to be unified with the rest of us. There's a huge amount of history in the south area that if we make that visible in the south area, those people will be feeling like they are a part of the rest of the community because of a shared history. And to piggyback on the city manager's metaphor, we're standing on the shoulders of the people of the past, and if we make those shoulders visible, both in writing and in the visible things on the ground, then we're going to be better unified as a city.
Do you have a lot left there, Loretta?
No, I have half, half a page.
All right, you're good, you're good.
Thank you. I figured done that, so I'm shortening part of it. I'm just going to hit a few highlights of what was in our other comments.
Okay.
Creating a new historic land use designation of some sort would address a lot of our concerns. The Corporation Yard needs to be identified as historic. It's where Folsom began, before Joseph Folsom commissioned Judah to lay out of town. That original town needs to be identified also. The Railroad Y and the Southern Pacific Corridor need to be identified as historic. The historic Folsom Light Rail Station needs to be differentiated from the other two stations. The ground sluice mining site needs to be identified as historic open space. The draft's description of Folsom's history omits several significant aspects that the historical society can help to rectify. The Parks and Rec Master Plan is called out, but the Historic Preservation Master Plan and its cultural resources inventory are omitted. You'll see that we've proposed a few specific changes as, that we'd like to see to illustrate ways that this history could be further incorporated into the document. And I wanted to conclude by saying, we don't ascribe any bad intentions to anybody on this. The Community Development Department is still recovering from the huge cutbacks that occurred in the recession. There's not a long-range planner on the staff there now. So we just feel like these were just unwitting omissions, and we look forward to having them included. And in conclusion, I'd like to just ask for a show of hands of people in the audience who feel that history is valuable to Folsom's future.
Come on now, everybody, raise your hands. Come on, there we go. All right.
Thank you.
Let the record reflect, there were a lot of hands, a majority raised their hands.
Do we comment now, or do we?
And anybody that wants to join HPL, I've got the brochures.
All right, great. Thanks, Loretta. Okay, Casey, good evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'm an eight-year Folsom resident, and trying to be more involved where I can. Thank you for doing the general plan. It's a very important document. I think Councilor Howe's very right, that it is very well-written. But Ernie is also right, that most people don't understand it. It's, if you're not in the business and don't know what, how important it is, they don't care to get involved despite all the outreach that you've done.
Oh, call me, I'll geek you to death.
But I did send you a letter. I wanted to kind of reiterate a few points because it's important to me, and I think it's important to a lot of people. The future planning area, you don't have to plan for the future of your planning area. The fact that it just happens to match up with land that's owned by the region's biggest developer is a bit of a slap in the face to the city, those of us that live here. You don't have to plan for it, nor should we. Most people I know do not want to see that type of development any further. Today, a document came out from UC Berkeley. It's called "The Right Type, The Right Place." It's about infill development and how much better that could be for the future of California. The document says that if you do infills opposed to business-as-usual, you'll see higher annual economic growth to 280 million in the state, and more tax revenue, and lower overall construction costs. California can meet long-term economic and environmental objectives by building the right type of housing in the right places. That means that we allow for reduced driving, less energy, less water, and more compact development near transit goods and services. This is the opposite of what would be achieved by the future planning area. It's not what Folsom wants, it's not what people I know want, and I think you should direct your staff to remove the future planning area from, from the plan.
So, Casey, just to clarify, so what you're talking about is, are future study areas outside the recently annexed area, then?
Correct, south, south of White Rock Road.
I just want to make sure we all understood what you're referencing there. Thanks.
Correct. There's a, you know, 2,000-acre-ish chunk that's owned by Sokopoulos family that is south White Rock Road.
Just to point out, there are different factions in the Sokopoulos family.
Okay.
And what you are talking about is not owned by Angelo Sokopoulos, it's owned by another-
A subsidiary, yeah, a family.
It's not a subsidiary, it's a different branch of the family.
So the general plan has a lot of good state of the planning practice. It's got a lot of good stuff, like mobility improvements, level of service changes. But then you have this future planning area that totally contradicts reduced VMT and reduced greenhouse gas emissions. You can have all those people driving in and out from essentially the Boondocks into downtown Sacramento and into where the rest of Folsom is, creating more trips and causing more traffic, defeating the purpose of what your goals of the general plan are. Also, the south of 50 plan is probably at least a 20-year plan to build it out, and why are we planning for more growth when we already have 20 years worth of growth that hasn't been, hasn't even started yet? Second point is, I'd like to see the city invest more into the Central Business District. The more you push growth out to the south of 50, the more it draws people away from the Central Business District. The good example is Red Robin. Red Robin left the Central Business District to go to Plaudio because that's the new shiny thing, and you're going to see more and more of that. So without some good, strong policies to retain those businesses there, they're going to continue to go to where you're building the new shiny areas. And finally, I'd like to see that city really is missing a golden opportunity with the gold line. Our transit stops have parking lots around them. They should be developed, they should have mixed use around them. We should also plan for future transit stops. We don't know what's going to happen. That Toyota dealership or Kikoman could totally redevelop and have a whole bunch of houses and make sense for a new transit stop. We should be planning for- We should be planning for the transit-oriented development along the whole quarter, not just within a quarter-mile of those stops. So in conclusion, I'd just like you to direct your staff to take out that future planning area, and I'd encourage you to consider the rest of my comments I submitted.
All right, great. Thanks, Casey. Thanks for your participation in this.
I think your comments were outstanding.
Okay, next speaker, please.
The next speaker will be Rob Ross, and Rob will be followed by Will Kempton.
Where did Rob go? There's Rob. Good evening, Rob.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council members. I wanted to talk to you tonight and encourage you to look forward in Folsom's future and support modifying the Folsom 23rd General Plan to include the comments that were listed up there about an overlay of a river district or an expansion of a river district. The river district potentially could run from Hazel all the way up through prison property and expand out on both sides, providing an amenity that we don't have today. We look -- we traditionally have turned our back on the river in Folsom. It's just the way that development was done in the 1800s, and now we have the opportunity to embrace the river and provide a lot of really major amenities to us. One is what I consider one of the most important things, and that's keeping Folsom in a small-town feel, and how do we do that as we grow? The biggest thing that I think we can do to grow and still maintain a small-town feel is to create public gathering spaces. And public gathering spaces, they're just spaces that connect people with nature, connect people with other amenities, and they promote what I call consequential -- excuse me, coincidental meetings. And they're just meetings between neighbors that we wouldn't normally see. I may be walking down the road and run into Ernie, but I don't go over to Ernie's house often, so this gives us a chance to meet, and it gives a way to people to bond, and it keeps that small-town feel. Also, a river district has the ability to encourage a healthy lifestyle, and one of the things that I hear often is that it gives the ability for people of all ages to access our river. And I don't mean the bike trails. We have a great bike trail, but some of those bike trails, very few go actually down to the riverfront. So this gives us the ability to get right down onto the river, and finally, our seniors will be able to get back down there that they haven't been in a long time, get down to the river's edge, which I think is something that's missing. It also has economic -- potential economic impact. Having an asset like a river district has the ability to be an attractor for large businesses that are looking for a place to relocate, not relocate to the river district, make sure I'm clear of that, but relocate into Folsom and give their employees something special that they can't get elsewhere. It keeps employers here and keeps their employees healthy. It also will provide an increase in property value in the area down inside the river district and the surrounding areas around it, potentially adding an increase in sales tax revenue and a dramatic increase in tourism, which also will help drive additional revenue to the city. I understand that currently, the land that we're talking about is partially -- it's kind of convoluted. Part of it's owned by the state, part of it's owned by the federal government, part of it's owned by the city, but the predominant amount of it is leased from the federal government by the state of California. And I think that some would argue that that's reason enough to not even go down this road, and we shouldn't even try it, and it can never happen. But there are many, many great cities in the United States, including Nashville, Tennessee, Bend, Oregon, Reno, Nevada, Pueblo, Colorado, and Portland, Oregon, that have faced almost the exact same challenges, where they had a state over-encompassing over an area, and they were able to show the federal government or the state government, in many cases, how they were going to be able to develop that land, and I used "develop," how they were going to be able to create an asset that's around this body of water. And I think it's time to add Folsom's name to the list of cities that have embraced rivers that run through it. We have a great city running through our backyard. So in closing, I encourage you to start up the process now, because we need -- it's going to take a long time to see this through with the state and the federal government, and it's a big challenge. But I know that we, as a city, are up for it, and I know the residents are very interested in it, and I know as a council, you have the power and the wherewithal to see Folsom into the future. So please, add a river district to the Folsom 2035 general plan. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Rob. Thanks for coming out today.
Your next speaker is Will Kempton, and Will will be followed by Joe Galliardi.
Good evening, Will.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Will Kempton, 140 Feather Falls Circle in Folsom. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of the chair, as chair of the city's Park and Recreation Commission. As Mr. Miller said, the Parks and Recreation Commission received a presentation at our March 7 regular meeting regarding the city's general plan update. Commissioners were afforded the opportunity to comment on the draft plan and to provide direct input to the planning director and the consultants preparing the document. I also sent a letter to the council to summarize the commission's comments and input, and will briefly restate that information this evening. Commission observations regarding the draft plan were expectantly focused on parks and recreation programs, and commissioners were pleased to see references to the importance of these issues contained in the proposed vision and guiding principles for the general plan. In addition, we noted many references throughout the document to the importance of a healthy lifestyle for city residents, recognition that Folsom is a premier recreational destination in Northern California, and that quality parks and recreation programs, along with expanded opportunities for related activities, are a vital element of the city's future. The commission did note, however, again, as Mr. Miller referenced, that the proposed implementation programs contained in the draft update do not go far enough to ensure that the overall objectives of the new general plan are met in terms of parks and recreation programs. The commission believes that the draft general plan needs to be modified to add additional implementation strategies to achieve the goals and policies referenced elsewhere in the plan. So specifically, there are four recommendations. Number one, as recognized in the draft plan, outdoor recreation facilities are an integral part of Folsom's recreation -- excuse me, Folsom's attractions, not just for residents, but for contributing to tourism and economic development. A strategy for maintaining existing outdoor facilities and promoting new and/or expanded facilities need to be included in the plan. To that end, GOAL PR 4.1.5 calls for enhancement of the American River Parkway, urban waterways, and riparian corridors to increase public access for passive and active recreation. The commission received testimony at the March meeting regarding waterfront enhancements to Lake Natoma within the city limits, and the commission agrees with GOAL PR 4.1.5 and suggests creation of a so-called river district in the final general plan and the inclusion of an additional mixed-use overlay for that district to preserve options for achieving that goal. Number two, the draft plan makes little reference to indoor sports facility development. This type of development will also play a critical role in meeting the recreation needs of city residents, and we should incorporate a strategy to ensure implementation of expanded indoor sports facilities for the future as well. Number three, the development of programs and initiatives to attain alternative sources of funding for the acquisition, development, and renovation of parklands and for financing of expanded recreation programs is central to meeting the needs of city residents and maintaining Folsom's standing as a premier recreational and tourist destination. The commission strongly endorses an implementation strategy along these lines. Finally, four, a governmental coordination strategy needs to be added to the final plan to ensure engagement and appropriate assistance from county, state, school districts, and federal agencies in achieving the goals and policies contained in the draft general plan. The commission appreciates the opportunity to present these recommendations to the council. We do want to compliment the staff for preparing a comprehensive draft general plan for community and council consideration, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Will. Thanks for that detail.
The message you left, I thought I was on that list, because I'm going to be there. I'll take care of that in the morning.
You are. You are on the list. No problem.
All right. Thanks, Will.
Your next speaker is Joe Galliardi, and Joe is followed by Bill Smith.
Good evening, Joe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's hard to follow Mr. Kempton when tomorrow he's celebrating a very special birthday without divulging his age. Just one of the numbers is a zero at the end, so a big happy birthday to Will Kempton. Tomorrow, it's a very special birthday. He didn't get an applause for his comments, but he did for being his age, right? Joe Galliardi here, representing the Folsom Tourism Economic Development Corporation Board, and we're here to support the creation of a river district overlay. The riverfront areas of Folsom are great assets that are currently underutilized and need to be elevated to a position of strength from a branding standpoint. It's been done in many other communities, both locally and nationally, and we believe that it's an opportunity to have it incorporated into the general plan to enhance that. Secondly, we're in support of the Parks and Rec Commission comments to the city council creating the designation areas that will enhance Folsom frontage along Lake Natoma. We have submitted a map depicting an area that we thought might make some sense for that. And lastly, that based on successful public participation and planning efforts in areas such as Portland, which have created nationally-recognized enhancements to its river fronts, better increased public access amenities and recreational opportunities, the city of Folsom now has that opportunity to do that and embrace the water as part of our community. So we encourage you to incorporate a river district overlay into the general plan, and then start the process once the general plan's adopted, to look at what opportunities there are there.
Great. Thanks for coming out this evening, Joe. All right, next speaker, please.
Your next speaker is Bill Smith. Bill will be followed by Harriet Freitas.
Hi, I've got a document I wanted to hand to Ernie about this item. I was asked to turn in a couple of pages of notes a year ago, and so here's what I've been coming up with.
So, Bill, before you finish, do you need these back at the end of the meeting?
I'll get them next time. I'll get them next time. It's going to take them some time to review them. So next time, I'll pick them up, or else I'll come by town if I'm able to get here. And it looks like I will be. All right, so here's what's going on. I was watching a special presentation today, this evening, about -- they had Nancy Pelosi on last, when I was listening to the people. It was a two-hour session. It's mentioned in this document at the end. And it seems that the federal government is a little bit hamstrung, so you can't really depend upon anything, especially with the people that are about to get left out of the crowd, that are brought in to make sure that the billionaires get their ways. I have received today, the Forbes magazine yesterday, about the -- it was 1,810 billionaires. I think there were over 2,000 now. And we're losing and getting 200 billionaires a year on the Forbes list. And there's somebody who's got a family that's been operating for the last couple hundred years, who's got a lot more money than that, who's been financing banks all over the world, and a few other things. That'll be interesting to find out about off-topic. So what's going on is the federal government is effectively hamstrung, so is the state. I'm pretty close to what's going on, because I'm pretty good buddies with Jerry Brown, and he calls me Bill. Where we're at here is a zone where we're realizing, as a nation, the peak of the automotive industry. You know for a fact that the millennials have stopped buying cars, and they were left out in the cold with the, just like a taxi, for average three minutes with Uber. And Uber. You're cold when you Uber. So you don't want to be left in the rain. And I mentioned last time I was here about having 27 different modes of transportation when I went down to San Francisco and back, and a few years back, and then they came up with a Megabus. So if I did 27 modes of transportation, I would have been slowed down by, at three minutes a ride, if I took Uber the whole way, it would have been an hour and eight minutes short of an hour and a half, okay? So what I'm realizing here is how to combine American technologies with Americans who haven't managed to move in on the 125-year-old bicycle industry with the safety frame. My girl was buying a bicycle at the Berkeley Police Auction one time. I bought five bicycles when I went to where they moved it to, but they made her leave because she said she wasn't going to buy the bicycle. And the bicycle had a crack right underneath the frame at the front, and apparently somebody hit a bump and didn't have a shock, apparently, and they were too big a person. So once we get our health coordinated, Jerry Brown has come up with the 28 mile-per-hour ruling on the bicycle lanes when you have, like, complete streets, and it hasn't designated where you can go 28. How much time do I have?
You've got about negative four seconds now, Bill.
Okay.
So if you could wrap it up.
I'll keep up to speed on what is happening with your pathways.
All right.
And I've got a PATH also, the PATH program in UC Berkeley. I'll be speaking to the people at Lawrence Berkeley. They just did a contest. I'm going to be able to monitor and be able to apprise and be able to mentor the people that won the contest.
All right. Thanks, Bill.
I happen to know Lawrence.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Okay, next speaker, please.
Your next speaker is Harriet Freitas.
Good evening, Harriet. Thanks for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
Welcome back. It's the first time we've seen you in quite a while.
Yes. Harriet Freitas. Much has been said about Parks and Rec this evening, and the arts come under the Park and Rec Commission, and I don't hear anything being said about the expansion of our public arts program or our educational programs that take place here in Folsom. We have just about run out of space in the firehouse for the arts. We do need more room, and we need more equipment, so I would just like someone to include the arts.
Okay. Okay. And we'll add that to the indoor wish list there, indoor facilities. Thanks, Harriet. Okay, any further speakers?
Mr. Mayor, you have no further speaker request cards.
Okay, so we'll just close the public hearing there. And then, so before we get into general comments from council members, any other specific questions for David or Chelsea? All right. Ernie, it looks like you're eager to start off with a couple of comments there. I'll give you 30 seconds.
Lots of luck, is all I can tell you. Well, first of all, I'll go back to what I said in the beginning, and I'll argue with the engineer that maybe it's the kind of stuff they read all the time, therefore is exciting. I find it very well-done, but I still think it's not for the average guy, the residents of this town, and I think the input we got from the people that did read it and do it is fine, very professional. And I think, I'm not criticizing the consultants, I think they did a good job. But I still think it's very technical, okay? It's not for every Tom, Dick, and Harry to read this thing. But as I read this, and I didn't get it completely done, I'll be honest, okay, I've had other things in my life in the last month that diverted my attention, however, as I read this thing, I say to myself, what the hell are we doing? Because I look at this thing, and it looks like we're going to a 200,000-plus town. When I signed on back in 1985, I was looking for around 75,000. I thought Mr. Holdness was in that area. We thought we had a measure end back in 1988, I think it was, that said we're going to cap it at 79,000. And I hear later that's not illegal, okay? And we're at 75,000, but when we do the south of 50, we'll be about 115,000. But when the comment of Casey about, don't look beyond White Rock, I have no intention of supporting anything that goes south of White Rock. And when you hear the comments, and I don't fault Dave, Dave's an excellent planner, when you hear the comments of, we have to protect our borders, that's why we got south of 50. We heard the same thing. Rancho Cudobah is going to come in with all the strip joints and all the girly places, and oh, my lord, that Highway 50 won't stop them. Well, guess what? Now we got White Rock Road, okay, and there's a whole thousands of acres south of that. I have no intention of supporting anything that would go that way. Now, would I go to Aridjett, Hillsborough? That's a pretty nice development. That might be something I would consider, okay? But I'm not sure. I didn't hear 5,000 homes when I was out there in the tour. That might change my mind. So I'm just saying, this is a very high-technical thing, and the direction seems to be more and more, and I don't believe that more vigor is better. I just don't believe in that, okay? Now, I'm not so old-fashioned, you know, that I won't go for change. I will. But I look at this, that we're heading for a 200,000-plus community, and I don't think that's what the people want. Now, there are influences in this town, and they're mostly good, and they represent their profession, and I don't fault them. They should do that. But I don't think the average people in this town, you always want to blame the new people. Well, we're here, we don't nobody else. Now, that's not the case. Bigger is not better, in my mind. Now, there's some technical things, and maybe you guys can tell me what is. I look under the thing, and it says, quote, "new policy." So first of all, I ask myself, what's the new policy? What does that mean? That means it's not in the general plan that we are operating today. I assume that's what that means, okay? And then I say to myself, who made it up, the new policy? Where'd it come from? Is it a consensus to the planning department, the-- Is it a consensus to the planning department, the consultants? Did it come from input from the residents? Did it come from a standard that you have, that you apply for planning? I'd like to know what that means. I thought the policy was made at this council. Okay, maybe I've been misled for eight years, okay, nine years. But I saw that. So, what does it mean? And how was it determined? We talk about historical preservation. No. Now, I'm gonna take a little issue with Naretta, and I'm not a lawyer, and there's probably a bunch of lawyers that say I'm wrong. Well, okay, fine, that's great. But I represent a nonprofit 503(c). As an individual, I can say what I want. I just can't say I represent my 503(c). And if you have 100 people, 100 people can get up and fight for what they believe is right on historical preservation and documentation. So, there's no reason for your whole crowd not to have blue sheets and testifying, as long as they're not representing the organization, they're representing their views on history. And I think we've really put history into the pits over the years I've been here. We talk it. We give it lip service, but we don't do it. Roderick Ranch is a good example of that, okay? And when we talked about, to the Historical Society people at the museum, what answer did I get? Well, we can't get involved in politics. How the hell do you think you don't change things unless you get involved in politics? So, I have a problem with that. I think Naretta is absolutely right. We have not done enough on historical preservation. I would agree with Harriet, probably a guy in shock, but I'm agreeing with her. But I think that she's right. There's not enough on arts and culture, okay? There's just not. We need to do that. We're heavy on business. Now, maybe because we're looking for people, that brings business. Or maybe the business needs people, that's why we get more people. That's why we... I'm not against growth. And if somebody wants to go south of White Rock, Rancho Cudobah or Timbuktu, that's fine. The developers can build everything they want, make money, that's good. I have no problem with that. I don't think this town needs to be beyond 125,000, 115,000 that we're at right now. I just don't believe it. And I believe the people in this town will support that issue. Another thing that comes to me on this is, there's some technical remarks. For example, it does not impact whatever we're asking to do or to go, does not significantly impact. What the hell does significant mean? I mean, if I got a, something comes up next to my house that disturbs my quality of life, I don't know who's determining it's not significant. I'll determine that, okay? So, it just turns out...
Just a reminder, the house next door is to use for sale, so that could happen.
I know. We need to build $300,000 homes for our young kids that are gonna be coming up and wanting to come back to Folsom and stay here, okay? I'm not against buying the six and 800,000, million-dollar houses if you can afford it. But our young people coming back, that we wanna come back, they can't afford that. So, we need those $300,000 houses, even the city has to subsidize it in some way. I'm all for it. We talk in the terms, and I know it's the trend, get rid of the car. My god, you can't get rid of the car, okay? You can do a lot of good things with bikes and walking and all that, and the trails are tremendous in this town. Credit to the Park and Rec for doing that. Okay, I want that, but you can't get rid of the car. Are you gonna carry three bags of groceries from Trader Joe on a bike? No, you're not. You might make three trips, okay, with a basket or something. You got to be real. And then, the way this plan reads, we'll put the auto business out of... I don't know how much gym we get from the auto sales tax, but I think it's significant, okay? So, you wanna put 'em out of business, then we should be worrying about revenues? We gotta recognize that the automobile at the time is going to be something. But again, we need transportation, and I think it's covered pretty well in here, okay? But these are some of the things that I come across, and I'm still reading. I'm not done. I'm done maybe for right now. But I'm not done reading this. And I think the people I talk to, and I'll, I hope to, when I go to my chamber, they don't poison my food for me saying this, but I am not for the river overlay, the river thing. Do we need more drinking locations? We have 37 drinking locations right now on Sutter Street. You make that river overlay to go from Hazel to the prison, most of them is gonna be some kind of outdoor drinking and rest, it ain't gonna be recreation. So, I'm here to tell you right now, I'm gonna fight to the end of my time for a corporation yard that requires and respects restoration of our history, the Indians, the Negro, the pioneer, the Chinese. That's who I'm gonna wanna see on that thing. We have access to the river, but it'd be through historical preservation, not through businesses. We got enough businesses, okay? So, I seldom ever just argue with Mr. Will Kempton, who is a friend of mine for 20, 30 years. But then this one, well, I'm not with you, okay? I'm just not with you on that riverfront thing. I don't believe it has a need, okay? So, for now, that's what I've got to say, but that's why I asked Dave if this was anything final, because I know I'm gonna read, I figure I'm gonna have to read this plan at least three times before I really understand it and know where you're going. But right now, when I read this thing, I think that the vehicle that's driving this plan is economic development, and that's wrong. The plan should be driven by the desires and the quality of life of the people that are here, and what they want to retain, and what they want for their kids when they grow up to have the opportunity to live in. It's not necessary economic development, okay? But I could change this, but I don't think so. But I need to read it more. And I think everybody out there, if you only read it once, you better read it again. And Casey said something about, don't put this in the plan. Let me tell you, if anything's in that plan, some years down the road, somebody's gonna say, well, it's in the plan, okay? Whether you say, oh, it's just temporarily in that plan, don't fool yourself. Somebody will come up, some council member, some council would say, well, we're only following the plan. And that's it, you know, we have a sphere of influence south of White Rock, and we're heading for Rancho Marietta. And then maybe we even add an extent when we get there. So, I say no. I think from a professional, you know, I do wonder if mostly it might be English majors, maybe journalism, because you write some words that I read, and I read it, and I read it, and I come back and say, what the hell does that mean? Okay? And I have a master's degree, so I'm not a complete idiot, okay? But sometimes you can make it too fancy. Bring it down to somebody that's sitting down on Street X, and they can read it and understand where they're going with, where their life is going by this council and this city. So, this is criticism, maybe Carrie can read it better than me, but I think I read it like the average guy walking the streets of Folsom. That's all for now.
All right, great. Thanks, Ernie. Roger, I'm gonna jump in here.
So, as I read this, as I'm reading it, I've met with several of the stakeholders and a lot of the development companies who are in the process of south of 50. And I'm big on impression levels and social media to gauge the residents as far as what they want, what they don't want. Folks like Casey, you know, they've reached out to me, and they've done a good job as far as detailing the specifics of what they do want. The first thing I wanted to start, actually, I wanted to ask Joe Gagliardi, can I put you in the hot seat real quick? If you don't mind.
Watch out for the food.
I've heard four folks today talk about, tonight, talk about the River District and what it can do to Folsom. What's the, in your interpretation or your strategy, what's the vision that you push for that, take the ideology of it could benefit? What's the vision you have for that?
Well, I think the benefit, I mean, it could be anything, but if you take...
What do you use it as?
But if you take an area like this and think in terms of the great parks or riverfronts throughout the country and throughout the world, it's an open book. To Ernie's point, we should recognize the history that's associated with it, whether it's Indians, whether it's the Chinese, whether it's the African-American, whether it's mining, whether it was a powerhouse. And then you add the recreational elements of having water and have kayaks, stand-up paddleboards. People have asked that they want more access for a boathouse. I mean, I think it's endless. I think there's areas of it that should remain pristine, and there's a, it's a big enough area that can accommodate a lot of different things. I think what we said was, there should be a public, there should be a district created, and then you should start the process of a public participation to see what should be done in there. And it's not just one little small area. I mean, that landmass is huge, and to have an asset like a waterfront that is right adjacent to a historic district, cities throughout the world would die to have what we have, and we just look at it as not an asset. And we're saying, it's an asset, we should embrace it. So, I could tell you what I think, but that's not what we're suggesting. We're suggesting, this is an area that could be incredible. You know, if you go down to Negro Bar, you see an area that's a grass area, I don't know what the hell it is.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it's a grass area, but it's not necessarily utilized for recreation. There's an area that was supposed to be for horse staging. It looks dilapidated, looks like it's underutilized. And we're saying, you know, there's bicycling, there's, I mean, it's endless.
Okay. I just wanted to get more of a perspective. I know that, you know, that...
But what we're suggesting is create the district and start talking about what could be in the district, like a special plan area or whatever, and start that process, because it's an asset.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
The, I think that the plan is a good plan. It's a good base. I think that, and you can agree or disagree, I think there's a lot of meat in it, but it's kind of vague. There's a lot of specifics that I'm not seeing within here. One of them Casey actually touched on was that, you know, the block of, and I spoke with the mayor and city manager, the block of the redlining, and there's not a lot of details on there, so it raises a lot of questions. The reason why I was interested in the specific analytics of who's engaged and who's looking at it is because it can be interpreted in just a different way than it should be. I met with some of the folks within the Glenboro and the Eastern Development today, and I think that we should have some sort of acknowledgement within the general plan that shows what that's gonna look like, or what it could look like, and some type of acknowledgement in there so that those questions are answered right off the bat, so there's not a big conspiracy theory about where Folsom's going after, you know, after south of 50 or whatnot. So, it's one of the things I saw in there. The other thing was specifics on traffic innovation and first responder innovations. I came across a couple of different things regarding EMS innovation, and I think the specific, it was, yeah, 911 EMS innovation, and some different things to increase response and decrease lag within first responders. So, that's something I was looking in here. I didn't see anything within regards to railroad. The thought and idea, I put this out of a railcar within Folsom, I felt, to connect both sides, south of 50 and CBD and Sutter Street, and harness some of that historic value that we have within that railroad instead of just it just sitting there idly. I don't see any specific plan or use. It's just, it's not labeled in there. It'd be nice to look into that and start the discussions with that. And the thing that I've mostly, I mean, we have a long time for this, and David, I appreciate the, you know, the five and six months of, you know, rigorous meetings you're gonna go through, you and your staff. So, I applaud you for everything you've done so far, as well as the consultants and bringing this out. The, a lot of folks don't feel like they have an input. And that's why, again, the analytics are important, because a lot of folks say, it's already done. There's no reason for us to comment, so they bypass the message. So, that tells me the branding needs to be geared differently to basically say, it's not done. Folsom is not done. It's nowhere near done. We need your input. And create that impression level based off what you're receiving already. So, anybody can put a post out and say, we posted it on Facebook, but I wanna know who's looking at it. I wanna know what their comments are. I wanna know the engagement and the activity level so that we can engineer as a city and leadership that message to those folks and get more impression levels on it, I'm sorry, engagement levels on it. I think I'm a prime example of someone who got involved and can make a difference. So, that's anybody within Folsom. So, I'd like the city to start engineering that message a little better and putting that perspective out, is that it does matter and that it's not done. So, that's pretty much all I got for now.
Great. Thanks. Thanks, Roger. Carrie?
Well, okay, I'm gonna start with, sorry, it is easy for me to read, maybe it's just that I'm that much of a geek. But one thing that I did note and that I discussed with the city manager earlier today, there's a lot of things that are listed in the general plan, and I encourage people to read it. It's not that hard, and I think it is written in plain English. But a lot of it is fairly general in nature, and there's probably 150 things that are listed as new policies. And there's some former elected officials and former city employees in the room that will probably understand what I'm talking about when I say this. But there's a lot of things in here that are listed as new policies that are anything but new policies. They are in part based on state regulations, based on federal regulations. So, they're required no matter whether they're listed as a new policy or not. I think it's interesting that we are gonna memorialize them in the update of the general plan, given the date, the age of the most recent version, some, you know, basically 30 years ago. So, that's all very interesting, but to suggest that most of these are new policies, they're not. They're required by law, and they're what we've been doing for the 24 years that I've been involved in, you know, the development and political activity in Folsom. So, I think that's important. You know, it has to do with response times, it has to do with providing adequate water supplies, providing storm drainage. There's a fair amount of discussion here about the 100-year floodplain. I'm not sure that we have any development in a 100-year floodplain in Folsom. There's talk about earthquake susceptibility. My understanding is that the probability of a major earthquake in the city of Folsom is equal to the probability of a major earthquake in Boston, which is to say, not very high. And one of the reasons why I chose to move here so many years ago, because I'm not expecting an earthquake. I don't know about you guys, I don't have earthquake insurance, and it's unlikely that that's gonna happen. So, it's nice that we talk about that, but there's things that I think that are in this document that are kind of irrelevant, and they're just a restatement of doctrines and policies that the city of Folsom has been following for a very, very long time. I see that Tony has sat down. I appreciate Tony's comments, particularly about the bike and pet stuff. And I think, were you like an English minor with an engineering major? Because Tony's got a lot of editorial and language changes that I think are suitable. And I'm glad that you were, your comments with regard to the bike and pet issues have been relatively supportive. With regard to the River District, having been on a couple of the economic development trips that we did, I think the River District is a great idea. But just to provide a little bit more background, I don't think that anybody's suggesting that we build, you know, build a bunch of bars and restaurants along the river. I think we need to utilize that space for the recreational opportunities that it offers. I'd like to have, you know, the next NCAA high-profile rowing races have Folsom feature more prominently in those races, other than just the Aquatic Center that's at Sac State. I think it'd be great to have a boathouse up here for kayaks, for skulls, for whatever else we could use that for, because right now, the amount of activity that takes place at the boathouse at Sac State, it's pretty intensive. So, I think we could be a relief valve for that. And that, especially the rowing, that attracts a significant number of people worldwide, as we know from past NCAA events and from senior events that have taken place up here. And those people have significant disposable income. So, I think all of that's great. I don't think that this is an attempt to have businesses locate down there. I think it's a tourist attraction, and it is probably the best first step for the city of Folsom to continue to attempt to make headway with the state of California that currently leases that land from the federal government. I think that most of the people in Folsom would have a strong argument that the facilities in Folsom, the public amenities, the parks, the trails are all in much better shape and much safer than those of the American River Parkway system. And I personally would like to see the city of Folsom have a little bit more control and monitoring over what happens at Lake Natoma, because I think the city could do a better job at doing that. And I think our planning to have a River District puts us in a much better position to go to the federal government and say, hey, why don't you let us take over some of the responsibilities the state of California has been ignoring for very many years? So, I think that is a really good idea. With regard to the study areas, I think the study areas are also a good idea. Again, I've been on this council and on the Planning Commission for a really long time. And the reason why we got this sphere of influence and why we did the plan area is because the area that was in the complete control of Sacramento County... because the area that was in the complete control of Sacramento County was subject to the county's whim at any point in time, and so for that to be included in our study area, and I'm not saying that I want to annex the areas, not tomorrow, maybe not 40 years from now, but if we identify those as study areas, it means the city of Folsom will be well-informed as to anything that is likely to take place there. And at the end of the day, it's across the street from the city of Folsom. So, somebody used the example of a strip club. 20 years ago, there were two strip clubs on either side of Highway 50 that Sacramento County allowed in violation of their own ordinance that prohibited strip clubs from being within 1,000 feet of each other. But that was the entrance to the city of Folsom. So, as far as planning and looking toward the future, I trust the city of Folsom much more than I trust Sacramento County. So, that's something that I think is important, that we're paying attention to what happens at our borders, so that we are at least informed, and if we're not happy about it, we're in a position to do something about it, rather than find out about it after the fact. Another thing that I was a little bit concerned about had to do with the floor area ratio, which is basically density. If you look at page LU3, the highest density goes up to 20 units per acre, so you have to look to, two pages later, where those of us who are involved in densities know that the actual maximum density is 30 units per acre, and that has to, in part, to do it state law, so I don't want anybody to be misled, because you have to flip to the next page to see that 20 is not the maximum. That's important, those are the kind of things I'd like to see adjusted. With regard to the rail use, I spoke to Loretta. As I mentioned earlier tonight, I have been the chair of the, the JPA that oversees the, the former UP rail alignment that goes from Sacramento all the way up significantly into El Dorado County. We have done a really, really good job at protecting that, and we have even protected it against members of the JPA that were threatening to destroy it. So, I don't know that I want to call it a transportation easement, and I know that's been one of the suggestions, but the, and I, and I think it might be a little bit redundant, and it might mislead people into thinking that it's going to turn into some sort of a bus route, or whatever it might be. But in the city of Folsom, on much of that alignment for the railroad, we have in fact built bike trails. We are currently operating, or the, or the feds and the, and the Sac Valley Railroad folks are operating basically a tourist rail activity along a good part of that alignment that goes all the way out to La Trobe, and because of the fact that the JPA owns that property, which is Sacramento County, the city of Folsom, Rancho Cordova actually has representation on there, they weren't incorporated at the time, but the portion of the easement that, that lives within what is now the city of Rancho Cordova was paid for by Sacramento County, and the remainder was paid for by El Dorado County. The, the property limits are well-defined, and what can and cannot happen within that right-of-way is basically under the purview of the Joint Powers Authority and the member agencies. So I think we're covered there. And, you know, again, I've, I've got a lot of very specific comments that I'll probably just submit to staff in writing, because I could go on for another hour, but I think that's probably a summary of my major comments.
All right. Great. Thanks, Kerry. Yeah, and I'll, I'll try and be brief here, I got a bunch of notes that I couldn't possibly follow, so I won't try. So just a couple of general comments, and this is a healthy exercise, and what we're trying to do here, in, in my mind, is, you know, parlay a lot of the good that has been developed in this community over decades and make it even better as we continue to grow. And everybody's got different opinions as to where those points of focus should really be, as far as, again, making sure everything's as good as it possibly can be. And the example I always like to share is, you know, our last major annexation was in 1984, which was similar in area as to the recently annexed area south of Highway 50. I would imagine part of the reason for our 1988 general plan was trying to figure that area out, and that's the current Broadstone Parkway and Empire Ranch area. And I think we would all agree that the growth in those areas, which again, annexed in 1984 is still not complete, so it gives you an idea of, you know, the pace that this takes to do it right, controlled, managed growth. And I, I think most would agree that a lot of that's been done very well. There's significant open space, you know, great mix of homes and businesses, you know, trying to fit all the pieces and parts in so that it is Folsom. And, and what I hear from comments from, from everyone is, "How can we do even better?" And, and that's why this is a, a healthy exercise. So, so what I'll do is, you know, some of what I've heard is, I, I think we want to try and tune a few things up. Certainly, inside the parks and rec or beside it is the arts and cultural historic. You know, those three themes really seem to come to the forefront from comments and also written comments that we've all seen. So, so if we could, you know, give that some of the attention that's been spoken to, I think that'll be a very healthy thing. The, the River District, you know, that's, you know, we're hearing a lot on that, that's been discussed for many years, so, you know, maybe addressing that, you know, there's, as Ben alluded to, complicated relationships there. There are some opportunities there. In fact, I believe relatively soon, we'll have our, our improved access down to Lake Natoma, kind of right near the Lake Natoma Inn there. So I look forward to kind of seeing that, you know, it's, you know, no pun intended, but a little toe in the water there as far as, you know, what can we do to improve access down there? And, you know, similar to what Vice Mayor Hall mentioned, is the Aquatic Center that we have at the other side of the lake there, near Nimbus Dam. So, so just to address that, again, we've heard some, some real interest in that, so, you know, where we can go with that, again, understanding that we're dealing with some state and federal agencies, and, you know, maybe we can do a good job in improving those relationships, which I believe have improved. Gosh, I don't know if I have a lot more than that. You know, again, just agree with a lot of what's been said, but just to emphasize one more time, this isn't done, and so if there's additional things, you've heard all of us say, "I'm going to be getting back to you with a few other things," because this is involved, it's very important. I'd like to see the folks that have really understand the seriousness of this. So, you know, Tony and Casey and Loretta, you know, folks that have really submitted, you know, comments where I have to go, "Well, I can't just read this in a few minutes," and, you know, "Thanks for the time you took to, you know, push that our way ahead of time." So, you know, that's all going to contribute to making this, you know, a very, very worthwhile process. And the last thing I'll say, and, you know, I think a number of people have touched on growth beyond what's annexed to date. We would be negligent as stewards of this community if, if we ignored anything past our borders. And, and I, I understand the concerns, but I am forever grateful that folks before me on this council took the borders very seriously in the decades before me. In a major metropolitan area, which is what we have, where there continues to be population growth, that growth is going to come, and it's just a, it's just a function of how much you want to participate and control that. And so I think we would be negligent if we didn't mention those things. It, you know, it's, it's a long ways down the road, I hope, but, you know, I, I am going to insist that we do include, you know, some sort of language in there that just says, "Hey, we're, we're keeping our eye on this, we're interested in what happens there." And I kind of believe that's kind of, you know, been the, the message there. So, so that's, I'm going to stop there with one last point, is to, once again, thank everybody, and I know Roger's very tuned into the social media aspect of this, and, you know, thank the city for, for pushing that as well at Roger's behest, and would continue to encourage folks. If there's something you forgot, if there's something you heard this evening you didn't like or you liked, we do like compliments, and a number of you have complimented us this evening, so it is difficult, it's, it's very important, and, and just, we'll make sure Steve Miklos gets tuned up on the discussion here. You know, when, when we have council meetings with a missing council member, it always goes a little bit faster, so, but, but Steve, Steve does regret missing this meeting, and he's been fully engaged, and I'm sure he'll watch the proceedings here upon his return. So, so with that, any other last comments?
I just want to add, I want to add two comments. One, with regard to comments, I know that I got comments in, just in the last couple of days, and we had another big stack of comments that we're sitting here tonight. You folks, most of you in the audience have been to council members, council meetings in the past, most of you, many of them. You sat here, this is like the longest meeting we've had, like, in a really long time. So, thanks, thanks for coming out.
It keeps going.
I know. Thanks for coming out, and thanks for giving us your comments, but I'm going to request that if you've got more comments, feel free to email them directly to the council members. You can get all of our emails from the website if you don't already have them, because if you wait until the last minute and then they go to staff, our packets typically come out the Thursday before the council meeting, so if you haven't sent them to us in advance and you haven't gotten them to staff before Thursday, then we don't see them until we get to the council meeting. So if you have anything that you want to complain to us about, or thank us for, or whatever, please let us know and feel free to email us directly. We cannot reply to all of, we can't reply to other council members, but we can reply to you guys directly. And I'm just going to make one more comment on the, the whole study area and expansion of the city of Folsom. Just as a point of clarification, the current population is a little bit over 77,000 people. It was 72,000 in the 2010 census, 72,203. But that's part of the reason why I want to know what's going on in those study areas. I'm going, I'm going to use, because it has nothing to do with Folsom and it's far away, I'm going to use the approval, Sacramento County's approval of Cordova Hills a couple of years ago, which is, you know, out on Grantline Road by Jackson Highway. You can agree or disagree with that, but I want to know what's happening across White Rock Road in case the county's planning on building 10,000 homes across the street from Folsom. So, those are, those are parts, some of the reasons why we pay attention to what's going on at the border, because we don't, if we're not paying attention and we don't officially stick our nose over that fence, then you can get blindsided, and we don't want that to happen to us or the residents of this community.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, if you'll permit me, we did receive a lot of great feedback over the course of our appearances in front of the commissions, certainly in writing, and the comments that were reinforced today. And I want to take an opportunity to maybe have my staff recap how we, how we are going to consolidate, deal with this commentary, get it back in front of you for further evaluation, because there's nothing more valuable than a good provocation that is often provided by floating a draft document. So, so in, in order to facilitate this type of dialogue with the community, and in order to make sure that we're getting stuff in front of you that really reflects your direction with going forward on the general plan development as we proceed here into the fall, I thought maybe Mr. Miller could just give us an idea of the schedule of that, how quickly we can turn documents around, how that will be received, and how we'll deal with further commentary.
Thank you, Everett. I think one of the things we'd really like to do is to sit down with some of the commenters one-on-one with our consultant, and in those areas where we think there's some word crafting or some ideas that we should have captured, try to reach a point where they think that their input is being incorporated, because nobody wants to come to another meeting and say the same thing and find that either for no good reason it wasn't included, or for a good reason it wasn't, and they still want to try to get it in. So I, I do want to meet with those individuals over the next couple of weeks, and get Chelsea here, along with Scott and some of our staff members, and try to work through those, those issues. We wanted to get a little bit of your feeling first as to how you'd like to assimilate this, and what I'm hearing from you is that we should follow up, and we should make whatever amendments that we think we can make that are productive and within the spirit of what you want in a document, and then bring it back to you in another draft session, and just focus on those areas where we made those changes, and see if that, see if that gets to where we need to go. And I would say that we probably want to delay starting the environmental work until we've had at least one or maybe two more runs through it to, to improve it, and to get some more of these great ideas involved.
So, David, in terms of turnarounds, you think, you know, a month from now and then a month from then, if we're going to go through two iterations, is-
I think that's a good schedule, because a lot of times when you sit down with folks, they want to get back together with you, and you really work, work through this. So I think if we were to come back to you in a month with the changes that we believe respond to the comments, and if we believe there's a little more work to be done, we'll tell you then.
Sounds like a good strategy moving forward. Everybody comfortable with that on the council here? All right. Excellent. Well, thanks, David, and thanks, Chelsea and Scott, for guiding us to this point, so. Okay, with that, where are we at here?
Your next item is city manager reports.
Well, thank you, Madam Clerk, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and members of the public. If you've been traveling eastbound on Natoma Street, you've probably noticed a lot of work on the fence and a lot of heavy equipment being offloaded right there at Prison Road, and wondering, "What in the heck is going on at the prison?" Well, that is phase two of the Johnny Cash Trail, which is about the next mile and a quarter or so of the Johnny Cash Art Trail that runs from essentially the terminus of the current trail, that's right across the street from Cimarron Circle, runs down the side of the prison, in between the ravine between the prison and the police facility, around the back through the open space, down into Rodeo Park, and then connects with Digger and Sharon Williams Park, and the trail that proceeds back down into the historic district, finishing off that particular segment of the loop. So, we're very, very proud of that particular trail segment, and that will likely be completed this coming fall. So, long time coming, short duration of construction, getting to crossing the ravine back behind City Hall to result in a very, very nice addition to our world-renowned now, thank you, Bill, trail system. And you might have seen in the news, or received a flyer, or somehow otherwise found out, but infrastructure and road improvements are starting to begin south of Highway 50. There is an 18-month schedule or so of first-phase infrastructure and road improvements, including Old Placerville Road, new extension of Alder Creek Parkway, and Scott or East Bidwell or some other new road there south of, of Highway 50, and that activity will continue through the spring and the summer. Please stay tuned to our various modes of connecting with you on our website, on our social media sites, our printed newsletter, our electronic email newsletters, and various other ways that we'll get messages out to you with regard to this project progressing. And with that, good evening.
All right. Thank you, Everett. Ernie, what you got?
Good surprise you didn't pass.
All right. Ernie passes. Roger, you want to take Ernie's time and yours as well, huh?
Gladly. Now, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming, and to those who did submit comments, it's, I love the engagement, and it gets me excited, so it's fun to see, and I'm looking forward to the process. The, a couple of things, I got the opportunity to ride with Folsom PD, both in the field and with the dispatchers who were highlighted today, and we are so lucky with those folks. I mean, you're amazing, absolutely flawless, so I wanted to say that. And then also attended the Muslim Community Open House. The event was, I think, a success, it was, it was really good, so just wanted to say thank you.
Great. Thanks, Roger. Kerry?
And just on our behalf, both Andy and I also joined Roger at the Muslim Community of Folsom. I encourage you, if you've not gone down there to meet with those folks, they'd love to meet with you. There's been a lot of great events in the last couple of weeks, there was good San Patrick's Day celebration on San Patrick's Day down on Sutter Street, that went well. I, I did notice, I have to get into my traffic report, I did notice that it looked like some sort of a head-on type collision on Montrose today over by Trader Joe's, and if PD, this was about 12:30 today. I go down, because that's kind of leaving my neighborhood, it's why I drive down Montrose a lot, and there's a huge number of cars that go either from the target, target parking lot over to Trader Joe's, directly crossing the street, or in the other direction, and it's, it's a dangerous situation, because they're driving too quickly in and out of the parking lot, and there's other people driving too quickly down Montrose. I don't know how those cars could have hit head-on, especially in the direction they were facing, but that's my guess. So if we could, you know, have Mr. Rackavan, and there's a couple of other locations where that happens, the same, same parking lot coming out of Trader Joe's going like toward Bacca's House, because we've got driveways that are directly across from one another, and if we could think about possibly putting signs on either side, so when you're exiting the parking lot, you either have to turn right or turn left, so that we don't have people shooting across that street, and hopefully I'm wrong- And hopefully I'm wrong and maybe that wasn't what caused that accident today, but it, my heart stops every time I'm pulling up, because everyone pulling out of Trader Joe's pulls halfway across the street and it's like, "Oh, there might be cars coming." So, that's my traffic, my traffic warning for today.
All right. Thanks, Kerry. And I really have nothing to add, so we will adjourn this meeting at 8:40.
Hey, Dave.